Everybody, thank you again for your patience. I appreciate you coming out while we finished up a couple of things at 7:35. This is our December 12th council meeting. We are called to order, please rise and pledge a flag. Roll call, please, Angela.
Here. Good, thank you. Laura Hauck.
Here.
Sabal Zayed.
Here.
Amy Hi, Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here. And Angela Ms. Hi did let us know ahead of time she's out of town on a family engagement.
Mr. President, I note for the record, we were in executive session from approximately 6:45 to approximately 7:30 with regard to several personnel issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. With that, we will turn things over to Mr. Truman.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. First up, I would like it if we could all bow our heads for a moment in memory of John Zaremski. John Zaremski is a Johnny Z, as most of the town knows him, was a borough employee, a skilled laborer at the Bridgeport Sewer Plant from 2016 until this past week. Unfortunately, we lost him on Sunday due to some health issues that he had been dealing with. I would like to commend two of our employees, Brian Kane and Dave Offe, for their quick actions and rendering aid to John at the plant when he had an incident back on November 30th. They saved his life that day. Johnny was a really good guy. Great laugh, great smile, totally the stereotypical case of don't judge a book by its cover. You know, had a bandana on and was tattooed from head to toe and, you know, couldn't have been a nicer, friendlier, more positive teddy bear of a man. And he is going to be missed, so if we could have a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Mr. Truman, well said. Thank you for that.
First up on the agenda for council consideration, approval of the November 14th, 2023 meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
We have a motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Heil, to approve the November 14th minutes. Questions or comments from council or the public on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
The next up on the agenda for council consideration, approval of the November 28th, 2023 meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion from Ms. Hauck, seconded by Ms. Nolan, for the November 28th minutes. Questions or comments from council or the public on those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Next up for council consideration, resolution 2023-35, establishing the Borough Fee Schedule And just for a note, there were a few nominal changes to the police fines and fees, their portion of the schedule. The annual residential trash and recycling fee increased, as has been discussed in previous meetings and as was illustrated in the most recent newsletter that went out in the last couple of weeks. And there was some minor corrections or revisions made to the amount of escrow that need to be put up by developers for certain residential and commercial projects, but the actual fees for building permits, zoning permits, things of that nature, there was no change.
I'll make a motion to establish a fee schedule.
I'll second.
The motion's from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, for the fee schedule for next year. Questions or comments from council or the public on the fee schedule? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving forward, we have a presentation from the Bridgeport Community Fund.
Just wanted to stop down and review some of the things we've done this year and give a little glimpse into what's going to happen in the future, going forward. First, Keith, I do have a financial report. I'm looking at the first time myself right now. Tony just dropped it off. I'll get that to you tomorrow and you can send it around as needed. Just looking back through the year, we've added some programs at the park. We started last year with a winter rec program inside. We moved that outside this spring. So we went from the school to the park Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 12:00. And we ran that from May and through October, through Halloween was our last day there or our last event there. It went well. Attended, you know, our attendance continually increased through word of mouth. Vacations made it a little tough to keep it uniform, to keep the attendance uniform. So there were some slow weeks. I kind of recall there was a week when it was just all girls, which they loved, but overall, the attendance was steady and growing and as we went through the year. Of course, Bridgeport Little League was back this year again. Bridgeport Bocce had their summer and fall programs, evening and senior, evening league, and then they had a senior day league this year. We have yoga at the park, which was extended this year through the fall with Anya Dietrich. Upper Marion School District Junior Varsity, baseball returned last spring. We added a youth baseball program that's working out of the park. That's Dominic Brown Youth Baseball. And then we had the P.A. Arsenal Youth Baseball, so that's teenage boys, 18U. Both programs were, did very well, but they're more used, they're not, they're more using our park for, as a home base. It's not necessarily a homegrown program. And then we did have in October of 2023, an Adult Men's Sunday Baseball League, which was fun and scary at the same time. Special events are where we saw our large turnout and we were most excited about, starting in the spring with the Bridgeport Recreation Easter egg hunt, where we saw approximately 100 children, and that was on a rainy day. So that was, we were happy with that. Then we did a, we added a cookout aspect to our Memorial Day. It was just our regular Saturday park and rec program, but we added a cookout aspect to that. And on that day, we had about 75 children show up. The first standout event of the summer was our Bridgeport Park and Recreation. We called it our Summer Family Play Day. It was the second weekend of July. And our, the goal there was we advertise as the families to come and stay. So we wanted the entire family to stay for the entire event and, you know, play together or, you know, participate in activities together. The fathers ran a home run derby. The family stayed and that was successful for us. We saw about 175 children, parents, and volunteers. So that was a big turnout for us. Then we did the same cookout type event for Labor Day, just a kind of back to school event. And then our Halloween Parade and Fall Fun Day was, we calculated that 200 children, and that was a large, large turnout for us. We do target Bridgeport children, you know, as far as getting them to attend first, but with social media, we don't turn anyone away on those special events, but our goal is primarily first and foremost to make sure our Bridgeport children are being served. And of course, the festive lights program, just a few weeks ago, we calculated that 150 children visited Santa. I don't know, I have no way of knowing how many adults. It was a large turnout. I think we all were there, we all know that. And another successful event with the changes coming next year for that event that we really have no control over. That was a good way to button up what it's been so far. It was a really successful evening. This year, we also, you know, we assisted the Catholic War Vets with Memorial Day and Veterans Day. We, I helped Ken, the commander of Catholic War Vets, just made some minor changes with the presentation, but the spirit of the event was the same. I think they were happy. I hope the community was happy with what we did there. We've, let me go back here and look at some improvements that we're making at the park. First and foremost was a joint effort with the sons and sisters, the park board and the borough, to resurface the basketball and tennis courts, which looked great, new nets for the tennis courts or for the tennis court, and of course, the addition of overlays for the pickleball play at the park, which does get used. I think it's surpassed tennis at this point, and it's popular already. Through a partnership with the Upper Marion School District, we've agreed that they're going, they use our 90-foot field for JV baseball, for practice and for play, for home games. They're going to replace and improve the backstop there, bring that into compliance for PIA double A play. They're going to install foul poles that will be, they can be there for their season and then be removed for the rest of the year. And they're going to start an enhanced pre-emergent turf management program, which means hopefully we'll see more, you know, grass on the field of play and less weeds and things that don't serve the playing surface well. We also have an order in for a complete replacement of swings hardware and the installation of pivot hardware to prevent the swings from getting tied up over the bar. It wasn't, it's not a cheap endeavor, but those swings getting tied over the bar is, it's dangerous first and foremost, and it's really difficult to fix easily. I mean, you can, if you can get up there and you can get access, it's easy to unwind them, but the problem is getting the access easily and safely. The Hall of Fame, we had a meeting about the, some changes we wanted to make to the lease. They were approved, so we'll be able to, we're starting to move furniture in and complete the move in of the memorabilia. And then the winter rec program, we're finishing our schedule for next year. We're looking at a 13-week program that will go into, you know, close to May so that we can just move back into the school, give the kids something to do Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 12:00 at the indoors. You know, and our goal there, like I always say, the parents and some of our children are here. I tell them, you know, we want them to be safe first and foremost and have fun, and we can do both of those, and we've been successful and lucky so far to be able to do that. And that's something we're proud that we can give the children a four-hour, a place for four hours every week, that they can come, the parents are learning that it's safe, that we provide a good program. Councilman Heil was able to participate, I assume until soccer started this, yeah. But we're learning as they learn, and so it's worked out good. And I want to point out the Elks Soccer Shootout, which I'm sure a lot of you saw online this weekend or a couple of posts online. The process started in September. We had, as part of our regularly scheduled park and rec program, the Elks hosted their local, the Lodge Shootout at our park, and some of our children advanced to the middle school for the next round. And then this past weekend, five of our Bridgeport Recreation participants went to Penn State University and they represented the Lodge, 714, the park and rec program, and the community. And some of them are here. I'm going to ask them to stand Lyra, Roan, and Megan. And they went up and they did very well. They had a great experience. I think the families, it was a good experience for the families and for the children, and we had a good time up there. I went up with Bill and Sharon from the park board and Jim Hunt, the exalted ruler of the Elks, was there with his wife. He's the state chairman for the soccer shootout program. And it was a good day for Bridgeport and Penn State, I thought. It was, it was pretty exciting for us to see our Bridgeport kids up there competing.
That's a fantastic job. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that a thumbs up from the kids? You guys have a good time? That's really cool. Thanks for doing that.
Thanks, guys. I'll take any questions before I have a short story I want to share, but does anyone have any questions?
I just want to say that we participate, we live like a block away from the park and participate in most, if not all, the events given without a conflict. And just want to thank you guys for all the great work that you do down there. Really excited to see that there's going to be new equipment. We use it all the time. Let us know if there's anything we can do to help with that process, but, you know, I know it takes a lot to put an event together, and you guys have quite a bit on your plate this year and last year, so it shows. Anytime I talk to any of my neighbors, there's about 30 kids on our block, and they all come, and they all are excited. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Is there, I know it's a dangerous question to have on the record. Is there any standout stuff that you guys are looking for, assistance from the borough, you know, areas we can partner in?
I think there's some large-scale capital improvements we talked about that I guess I'll keep in that meeting for now, but, you know, nothing, no surprises there, but there's some, you know, roadway and parking improvements that we're, we need to look at pretty hard this.
Yeah, I know they're on the radar.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Well, if there's anything we can do to help with getting grants, whether it's stuff that we can afford, it's always a priority for existing residents and new residents. It means so much that people have pride in staying here instead of having to go to another town to do things. I do want to say as well that the, I think that what you've done with the veterans events have been an upgrade, not that they were bad before, but I think that you can tell that it's a different feel and it just feels extra special, like you're trying to make them a unique event and not just the same thing. So I appreciate that it makes it worth going to, and I try to bring my kids when I can because I think it's, I was realizing this week how many, how our population of World War II veterans is so minimal now, so anytime you can bring young people to learn, it's important. So I appreciate that you do that so well.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for coming out, for the, giving us the report, and also thank you to the rest of the Community Fund and all of the volunteers that you have working every weekend with the kids in town. I know from starting to meet with you late last year and earlier this year, talking, you know, talking about the park board and everything that you guys are doing, and what was it, March, we met and you guys were all telling me about how you're going to start up this Parks and Rec program in the spring, and you were going to take it week by week, month by month, see how it's going, and then all of a sudden, I'm looking on social media and I see bounce houses up at the park. So you guys, and I know that that was a lot of community involvement with the businesses too that sponsored all of those. So I think that you guys had a great year, and I'm really happy to see everything grow in 2024.
Thank you. There are a ton of business and volunteers, and if I say one, I'll forget many, so I think we've done good thanking them throughout the year, and I'll keep, I won't make that mistake. I don't want to step in that pile right now. Anything else?
I have one more question. So in terms of the communications, is there a central location, just for the, for anyone that's watching, that they can go to find this information? Or if you're looking for volunteers, where can we assist in that?
Well, there's a, there's a Bridgeport Community Fund Facebook page and then the Bridgeport Facebook page itself, the unofficial one, but I don't know if it was in a newsletter, but we can get contact info in the next newsletter.
Fantastic, yeah.
Okay. I will, if, if you can just give me a minute, I'll tell a story real quick about this weekend that I'm sure Mr. Bella will like, I think, Mr. Phillips. We were, the pool party going for the kids that I wasn't going to participate in, and I was hungry, so I went upstairs to the restaurant and walked in, and there was one gentleman in the restaurant, a few seats down. Didn't pay much attention to him, didn't matter. I was on a mission for the menu. And so Bill came, Mr. Lawless came in a few minutes later, and he had a shirt that said Bridgeport, and from that end of the room, we hear a, "What Bridgeport are you guys from?" And we say, "Well, there's only one that matters, right?" And he pipes down, he says, "I grew up on Coach Street." So he comes out of the, out of the, that side of the room, down to where we are, and we recognize this guy who was there, we found out, because he had a group of young people in a basketball tournament, that he had coached a team to win a basketball tournament up there of young high school students. Turns out, I played Little League with him. Bill was his coach for the first year, it was Mike Allerton. So you can, you know how the next two, yeah, and you know how the next, that conversation went then was who hit this further, who hit that farther? You know, who was the best player to come out of Bridgeport and Little League and all that happened? But what wasn't in question was the conversation eventually turned to, we all started at the park and rec. And so here we are, three and a half hours away, looking for a connection, and we found one with a guy from Bridgeport that we had no idea was going to be there. And I imagine in 20, 30 years, if these guys bump into each other and they have that connection because of what we're doing up there, I think that's our program working. And if there's nothing else, that's all I have for you.
That's just tremendous. Absolutely tremendous.
Thanks, Randy. Really appreciate it. And have a great holiday. Yeah, yeah, guys, I should have mentioned that, folks, we have some items on the agenda and their budgets and nothing all that interesting, so we really appreciate you being out here, but you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. I'm actually not sure how long we're going to be here tonight. So if you don't, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the, for the rest of the meeting, please feel free to go ahead. And thanks again for coming out, everybody. Thank you.
Next up for council consideration, authorization to advertise the bid package for the demolition of 134, 135, and 136 West Second Street. Members of council, this is in conjunction with the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Part of the stipulations of participating in this program is the borough has, from the date of settlement on acquiring these houses, 90 days to commence demolition. So we acquired these properties on November 17th, I believe, was the closing date, so we are proceeding with getting the bid package out to interested vendors to start demolishing these three properties, if it pleases, if it pleases council, of course.
Well, with that in mind, I'll vote to make a motion to authorize the package.
I'll second.
Motion's from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Alzayed, to authorize the advertisement bid package for the demolition of those properties. Questions or comments from council or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, for council consideration, a traffic and parking subcommittee recommendation pertaining to a disabled parking space application at 30 West Front Street. Members of council, in your packets, you'll find a memorandum from myself representing the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee recommending where, detailed, a recommendation from the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee to council to approve the disabled parking space application that accompanies said memo. The application has been reviewed by our traffic safety officer, and the recommendation from, from the TSO, TSO Bailey, was also to, he saw no reason to deny the applicant approval. There were, now, this, this did come in a few months back, and we had initially intended to at least postpone making, rendering a final decision on this after, or until some other decisions were made as to the riverfront development and traffic flow in that general area, but I don't know that we are terribly close to rendering that decision, so in the interim, I think the Traffic Parking Committee thinks it makes sense to approve the application in the meantime.
Well, if the Traffic Committee approves it, I would make a recommendation and make the motion to approve.
Second.
A motion's from Mr. Heil, and it's seconded by Ms. Gundrum, to approve the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee recommendation at 30 West Front. Questions or comments from council or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, for council consideration, adoption of ordinance 2023-6, amending Chapter 535-15 of Bridgeport Borough Code titled Stop Intersections to add stop signs on Holstein Street, At Hurst Street, and on Green Street at Fifth Street. Members of council, this was, council voted in favor of advertising this ordinance at the last meeting, and this has been advertised in a local, local paper per Pennsylvania state advertising requirements, so if it pleases council, this ordinance is ripe for adoption.
I'll make motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Gundrum, seconded by Ms. Alzayed, to approve the ordinance regarding the stop signs on Holstein and at Green at Fifth. Questions or comments from council or the public on the stop signs? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, for council consideration, resolution 2023-36, establishing the real estate tax rate for 2024, and it was covered at our previous meeting, but this would be the 15th consecutive year where the municipal millage rate for Bridgeport Borough has not increased.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
You guys were quick on not raising the taxes. Motion from Ms. Alzayed, seconded by Mr. Heil, establishing the real estate tax rate for next year, and we will reiterate, no tax raise next year. Questions or comments from council or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Moving on, for council consideration, adoption of the 2024 budget. The budget has been, just like ordinance number six, has been advertised in a, in the Times Herald, a local circulation, as well as on our website for the as well as on our website for the, the delineated or required amount of time. And we are prepared to, prepared to adopt if, if council is so inclined.
Make a motion to adopt the budget.
I'll second.
Motion's from Mr. Hile, seconded by Ms. Nolan to adopt the 2024 budget. And before we vote on that, guys, thank you. I know a lot of work goes into it. Mr. Truman, thank you for all your work on the budget. That, a lot of that is under the radar. Mr. Hile, thank you. I know you were, you know, a lot of those finance committee meetings. So, so was Diane. I missed several of them. So, so thanks, everybody involved. I know it's, it's a lot of work, and not a lot of people see it all happen. With that said, any questions or comments from the council or the public on the budget? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Moving forward, for council consideration, approval of bills and salaries for the month of December 2023.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Alzayed, seconded by Ms. Nolan to pay the bills and salaries for December. Questions or comments from council or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, pay the people, Mr. Truman.
All right, very good. And next up, unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business to discuss this evening? Very well, seeing none. Committee reports. Are there any committee reports to share this evening?
I just have an announcement that this Saturday, December 16th, the Sustainability Committee, along with the Borough of Bridgeport and the Borough of West Conshohocken, will be hosting a electronics recycling event with E-Force Recycling. It'll be happening outside here at the Borough Parking Lot from 9:00 to 12:00. And you can bring any obsolete electronics that you have, barring smoke detectors or large appliances, will not be collected. And then there will be a $30 fee for TVs or monitors, and a $100 fee for wood console tables or projection, I'm sorry, wood console TVs or projection TVs. But aside from those fees, if it's, if it can be charged or plugged in, drop it off for free, and they'll take care of it for you. And as this is only open to residents of Bridgeport and West Conshohocken, please have some sort of proof of residency, so you can unload your electric kettles and printers and whatever else you may have. That's it.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Nolan. Are there any, sorry, I jumped the gun. There any other committee reports to share? Very well, seeing none, we can proceed to the mayor's report. Mayor Jex here.
Thank you. Last week, I got to take a webinar on the role of the mayor and municipal government, and I learned a lot about how to do my job even better. So if you have any suggestions as to what doing my job better looks like, I'm happy to hear about it. My email and phone line are always available, so please find my contact information on the borough's website. Also last week, I, along with council member Alzayed, we went to the Borough Association Dinner, where we were able to connect with many other elected officials in Montgomery County. It's always a great opportunity to hear how other boroughs are doing and to get potential ideas for us as well. So I hope you enjoyed. Yesterday, I was able to share my official Facebook page, my wonderful experience at Bridgeport Veterinary Hospital. They provide excellent care for your furry friends, and I would recommend them to anyone in the area in need of their services. Please make note that the Bridgeport Elks have finished accepting entries into their annual house and yard holiday decorating contest as of yesterday. Their judging's going to take place on this Friday, December 15th. So keep your ears open about which homes you need to pass by to see the best holiday displays in the borough. And since I imagine this is our last meeting of the year, maybe, I just wanted to extend a happy holidays to all of our residents who celebrate any festive event this month. And just kind of going along with that, I'm not going to be hosting my monthly office hours this month. I will see you next month with the future opportunities to meet with me. So happy end of the year, question mark. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, mayor. Moving on to the chief's report. Chief Peretta.
Good evening, everyone. We had something on the agenda. It was going to be an award for Mr. Les Neary and Mr. Bob Granieri on the Depot Street Bar, and for their assistance with our Bridgeport Food Security Program. Couldn't make it tonight, so I'll have to schedule it over the next few weeks with Mr. Granieri and maybe Celeste and Mr. Neary. But in, in, since I'm here, they did supply over 6,000 meals to our residents over four and a half years, when it just, that's where the rubber meets the road. People really found need, and they helped people every week, 10 to 15 families. We had food on our table because of them. So I hope to, in a few weeks, to be back with Mr. Neary, he doesn't like attention, and Mr. Granieri, and maybe Celeste and some of the people from the Depot Street Bar. But it shows that, how, how big of an impact you can have. Speaking of that, our BPD, our Bridgeport Holiday Toy Program, we're going to be meeting with some members from the Bridgeport Elementary School, our crossing guards, police officers, and borough officials this Thursday, December 14th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Target. And we're going to continue on with this next year's annual toy program where we purchase for the, for the children. I think we have about 50 children that we're going to be purchasing for. So it's a great program. It's a great combination effort with us, Borough Government, and the school district. So anyone that wishes to help, we'd love to have you out there. Also, if there's any business persons, businesses, or individuals that would like to donate to the Bridgeport, to this toy program, it would be to the Bridgeport Borough, and, and the memo item, it would be for the Holiday Toy Program. And that is not tax deductible. Some, some recent issues of concern. We had a computer fraud in the King Manor section of Bridgeport. Person clicked on their, their email, a virus popped up, set off bells and whistles and alarms. Long story short, the person went out and went to a Bitcoin ATM, which I did not know that there were, in King of Prussia, and spent $4,000 that they didn't really have to give up, and basically got taken to the cleaners. So we're investigating it. I, we have contact with the FBI as well. We're all learning a little bit about this kind of computer crime, usually not to this extent. Usually it was getting gift cards and scratching off the numbers and talking to the person. But this Bitcoin thing is, for this kind of cyber currency, is, is new for this kind of thing locally. So tell your friends, tell your neighbors. If you get something on your computer and it starts telling you that you have to give somebody money to get control back, just unplug your computer and cease communications. Whatever you're going to need to do, you can, you can do and get your computer cleaned. And it's not going to be any difference, but you will be, you will have thousands of dollars still in your pocket by not communicating with these people. Please make a police report if you do have something like this. We'd like to put out there that the Bridgeport Police, if you know, recognize that some of us look like Santa Claus in the month of November. We had the No Shave November. This time, $1,000 was raised by the police officers and given to the family of the recently deceased upper Marine Officer Troy Nicholson. So Troy, Troy's wife is actually just having a child now, their child. So it's all going to go to the implements for the, for the children in the family. So it was a wonderful thing. So guys got to have beards, and there's some positive thing from that outside of us. We just had, we had some concerns Sunday because of concerns about the flooding, the river level. Mr. Truman put it back out through a borough blast. We want people to, to sign up to Go Bridgeport. If you need help, call us. We can log you in, get you signed up. But we want to communicate with you, so we're finding our different ways to do that. So that was put out through Facebook and Go Bridgeport for the rising river. It stopped at 12.84, which is just under the minor flood level. It seemed as though, Mr. Truman, that those intersections on Depot Street, Front Street, that we didn't have any kind of flooding or pooling. So that was a, that was a good, a good take going into this other season.
We, we had nothing. We were in excellent shape, fortunately. Yep.
Holiday meal program. We have 60 meals going to be donated, so we should be able to take care of about 15 families. We'll be making deliveries between the 20th and 22nd of December. We have teams of people that wish to help. If there's somebody on the podium that hasn't reached out, please grab me. And we'll get teams of two and delivery schedule for, for the, the families that are going to receive this. We'll be getting them in from the, the 20th. And they're all prepackaged, once again, for CineSealy and the Moms Meals Group. Wonderful group. They've helped Bridgeport over the last five years, delivering hundreds of meals to people in need. So thank you again for being able to come up and help us out with that. LPR stuff, we have the LPRs. They've been working very well. There was a couple surprise people when they got out of their truck and wah-wah, when they got, they got detained. So that's, that's working. That's allowing us to secure stolen vehicles and take people into custody. So that's good. Thank you again for that program, council. And that's all I have for you tonight. So have a wonderful holidays.
All right, thank you, chief. Moving on to new business. Are there any items of new business to discuss this evening?
Do we need to make a vote on canceling the next meeting? If so, I would like to make a motion that since we passed the budget, we not have a meeting next week.
I would like to second that.
I'm going to third that.
Any, just, just so we have it all tied up, Mr. Truman, any concerns? Or Mr. Bello, or professionals or council people, before we have that vote?
I would force it if I could.
You can. It's on the record now. All right, we, Mr. Truman?
I was going to say Chief Peretta had told me prior to the meeting, he wanted to hold the meeting, but if...
His contract, his contract's up next year. It's okay.
Exactly.
Yeah. All right, so the, the motion was from Mr. Hile, I think, and I believe the second was from Ms. Nolan. Officially, questions or comments from council and the public before we vote to cancel the second December meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
President Schenk, one, one item I did forget, we do this every year, is the, the police officers go around town between the 20th and the 25th of December. They are all, they would do what we do annually, and they'll be choosing, each officer will choose the, the, the house, the most festive house in each ward. They will be doing that, and then we will be turning over the information to, to council here for prizes, $150 prize, I believe. So they'll have the ones for each, each ward and the overall winner, too. So we can look for that in early January.
Looking forward to it. Thanks, chief.
I'm not trying to sway any votes, but I've got a skeleton with a Santa hat on and a couch waiting for Bulk Trash Day on my porch if they want to come judge that.
All right. Seeing no additional new business, we can move forward to open forum and announcements. Are there any announcements for this evening?
Well, just since we're going to wrap it up and we're not going to have a meeting in the second half of the month, it's, it's been a real good year in Bridgeport, 2023. I've just been sitting, I didn't plan any remarks, but I've just been sitting here thinking. The, the Community Fund is just here. They've got a revitalized program up there at the park. We've got some new businesses that opened. We've had new events. We had the new, our first annual Founder's Day that was very well attended. And obviously, the big story is all of the riverfront development. That's a 20-year project that a lot of people put a lot of work into, and it's coming to fruition now. So I think if you followed some things that have been happening the last five or six years, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of work. There's been a lot of optimism. And now the ball's rolling. Momentum's here. So everybody that's put your time and your effort into those projects, I want to thank you sincerely for the work that you did. And I know a lot of folks will be watching this meeting, this recording, and, you know, everybody, we appreciate your trust. We appreciate the work, and we appreciate, you know, everything you put into the community. So thank you, everybody. It's been, it's been a great year. Have a happy holiday. That's all I have.
All right, very good. Seeing no further announcements, we can move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment this evening? All right, seeing no public comment, council could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, everybody. Have a happy holiday. Stay safe. We are adjourned.